Lengel.
Rouge.
Here.
Mayor, Pro Temp Vice Chair Director Cecilia Martner.
Present.
Mayor and Chair Director Mike Semensky.
Your mic.
The invocation tonight at the start of the meeting. Welcome, Hamal Abdul Rahim from the Islamic Center of Lompoc.
In the name of God, the ever merciful and merciful giving, we ask your blessings on these proceedings. And we ask that you guide us so all that is good and right in this world and in the hereafter. That you illuminate our hearts and open them to faith. That you protect us in our valley. Protect our families, our spouses, our youth. That you illuminate and guide to right guidance and wisdom those who are entrusted with the responsibility of leading. And that you make us, share us with them in this responsibility. And that you make us thankful for your blessings and your favors. That you make us kind and charitable. Charitable. You accept our acts of worship. And you make us those who mutually love each other for your sake. Amen.
Follow me in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. An announcement of presentations presented elsewhere on May 21st. I presented a proclamation to the Reverend Ed Iwamoto of the Valley of the Flowers, well, the agenda says of the Valley of the Flowers United Church of Christ, but he spoke there, coming back to Lompoc for the first time since he was evicted from the community as a child during World War II. And it was subsequently determined in a federal commission that it was basically a political failure with politics that gave into the hysteria of the public that caused the Japanese Americans to be taken from their homes and locked up, incarcerated for the full time of the war. It was a pleasure to welcome this man back to the valley, see the success he's made of himself, and maybe atone a little bit for the political failures and the shameful time that we've had in history. We have to learn from it. We can't do the racial profiling. We can't tolerate it. It was something that I said was a shameful period in our history, and I was pleased to be invited to go out and meet this man and give him a proclamation welcoming him back to the city. City Administrator, the Executive Director's Status Report, we've received a information-only presentation as part of our packages. I'm going to ask the City Administrator, if she would, to summarize the written report we've received on economic development for the benefit of the public.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, attached to the City Administrator's Status Report is a memorandum from Community Development Director Arlene Pelster. Her memorandum outlines changes to the Economic Development Program upon adoption of the 09-11 city budget, as well as a summary of the city's economic development projects and activities since council's adoption of the budget in July 2009. Ms. Pelster is available, and I would invite her to the podium at this time to give an overview of the city's economic development projects and activities to date.
Thank you. Just my way of background, this year due to budgetary constraints, the Economic Development Program was reduced, both in staffing and in funding. And the City Council transferred these duties to the Community Development Department with instruction to continue the CDBG and RDA funding programs, develop a renewed economic development program by June of next year, enhance coordination with the Chamber, Business Community, and Volunteer Resources, and to seek grant funds to update the Federal Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. You're going to hear me referring to it as the SEDs. The SEDs is necessary for city projects to be eligible for EDA funds if they become available. In June of 2009, we had prepared a contract to apply for an EDA planning grant for preparation of the SEDs. Since that time, those funds have dried up, and EDA is no longer issuing them. Staff is now planning to team at invitation with the California Space Authority to prepare the SEDs within the next month. The city will contribute $5,000 toward this project, which was authorized by council in June of next year, and we will participate as invited by CSA. So that's a good opportunity for us because it would have cost us $20,000 had we prepared it independently. Obviously, we would have been seeking grant funds and other participation, but this is a good opportunity for us to get that SEDs updated and be poised for any federal funds for our project. Another item staff is working on is coordinating with the California Association for Local Economic Development to schedule a professional advisory service review. This is where a team comes to the community and develops recommendations for developing local economic vitality. We do have a scope of work, and I think I'm closing in on a date. It's over about a two-and-a-half day period, and the tentative timeframe for this review would be sometime in August. So it's going to be a lot of coordination putting this together, but I'm happy to say we're moving forward on that. The staff has also increased participation with the Chamber of Commerce. We currently sit on the Old Town Revitalization Committee and the 2020 Economic Vitality Committee. We've also increased communication with Chamber staff on a regular basis for matters relating to business development. This, for example, led to the adoption of the resolution supporting wine-related businesses in the Old Town because there was a need for that, and we were able to actually get that process very quickly. So this enhanced coordination really does seem to be benefiting us and helping businesses. The staff is also working on an RFQ for structural engineering services for several buildings in the Old Town, and this effort would be funded by the Redevelopment Agency. We received nine statements of qualification which are under review, and we anticipate being done with that review and selecting a structural engineer by about mid-June. In December, the staff facilitated suspension of the street improvement fee. As you'll recall, this was a very high fee that was really affecting development, and we were able to suspend it until March of next year, when it will come before council for review again. We sent a letter out to all our developers who had active projects, and we got quite a few phone calls complimenting us on this effort. So I think this was really beneficial to projects that are ready to go into construction. Following council's direction for redevelopment projects and getting redevelopment monies out there to be used, we had circulated a notice of funds available to 100 interested parties in December. As a result of that, we received applications, and council approved three loans at the last meeting that were a result of marketing those funds. So hopefully, that will get us some new development projects going. The staff has worked with the local Raytheon facility to facilitate the potential expansion of that facility. It's about a 1,500-square-foot addition, a 9,000-gallon liquid nitrogen tank, and about a 1,200-square-foot building that will help them expand their operations. Staff has also identified some economic development efforts which could be performed by a contractor. These efforts include items like small business workshops, job fair, business attraction for high-potential businesses, monthly office hours for regular business outreach. We're preparing to circulate an RFQ because we will be using CDBG funds, and that's part of the requirement of using those federal funds. But we think that's a way to help some of our small businesses during this time. We also met with a consumer analytics firm, and what these type of firms do is they specialize in site selection for the retail industry. They look at your trade area, and they try to match potential retailers with your locality. This helps you focus your efforts rather than going after all kinds of businesses. You try to locate the kind of retailers that are looking for your trade market area, and you focus efforts on attracting those to your community. We requested a proposal for services, and then we will be looking at putting money in the redevelopment budget, which will be coming to you shortly, so that we can pursue getting that type of a service and analysis done for our community. So we'll be bringing that before you probably at the next meeting. The staff also prepared a text amendment to allow wine tasting rooms in the industrial district, and that's scheduled to go to Planning Commission on June 9th. The staff had initiated an amendment of the Environmental Review Guidelines, which council approved at the last meeting, which will benefit businesses by streamlining the permit process. And finally, our city administrator did extend building permits, which were due to expire earlier this year. They're extended to December 31st, and this action does benefit new development projects by preserving projects that are ready to go and eliminating the need from having to go back through the plan check process. So that's a summary of our activities to date, and I'm available to answer any questions or go into detail.
Ms. Rouge.
Ms. Pelster, how many building permits did we extend offhand? I'm sorry.
Ms. Barcelona, I think there were maybe a dozen. Does that sound about right?
Yeah. I just want to make a comment. I asked you to talk about this in the public eye because we were constantly criticized that we aren't doing anything for economic development, and I think you and your team have done a great job in the last couple of months on making some of these economic development items happen and moving on with what we're trying to do here. So I wanted to thank you and praise your staff for moving ahead with this. I don't know if we need a monthly report, maybe every three months or something. Quarterly report might be easier, but I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that.
Ms. Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two questions for you. The first one is regarding your contact with Raytheon. What exactly the contact has been? The second one is leading to the question whether our utilities is planning to provide an incentive package so we can really attract this business and get them to come here.
Yes. Our initial meeting with Raytheon focused on helping to package the advantages of locating in Lompoc. One of the things we did to explore in detail were our competitive electric rates. We went over all of our economic development loan programs and the options to them to possibly utilize some of those funds. And our Utilities Director and our Management Services Director are working with Raytheon representatives on that electric rate, trying to get them an economic development package.
So that is actually going on?
Yes, it is.
I want to make sure we don't drop the ball on that, and we continue aggressively to provide that incentive plan.
Yes, I was getting emails on it today, actually.
Okay, great. Thank you. The second question is, which I didn't hear in your report, is regarding the Chamber of Commerce contract and what the money is that we give them for advertisement. Where are we on the advertisement side? I've heard a couple of negative comments of things like the visitor center in the base, Vandenberg Base does not have a single brochure for Lompoc. However, Santa Barbara does, and Bielton does, and many other cities do have their brochures there, but somehow Lompoc is missing, and that's the visitor center in Vandenberg, which is, I believe, a resource for tourism. So anyway, I'd like to hear, where are we in the advertising?
Okay. First of all, I will look into why there isn't Lompoc information available at the base, and we'll get that rectified.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Tourism advertising, the council allocated $37,500 per year, and that's primarily a series of publications, advertising for Lompoc in different tourism magazines, things like Sunset and Westways and that type of thing. And the chamber is making good progress on that, and if you'd like my next report, I can actually give you a detailed breakdown of that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Lengel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Pelster, for the report. Ms. Rouge had mentioned that possibly quarterly. I'd like to see it continue monthly for the time being. You know, we have been criticized for nothing happening in economic development, and this will be a way for us to stay on top of it. And we've got some dates in here. You mentioned some dates in August and June, but there are some programs that started well over a year ago that I think it's important that now we sort of keep track of these over the next couple of months and see where they're progressing. So I'd like to see this report continue on a monthly basis, at least for the time being. The information, almost to the bottom of the second page where you're talking about the real estate industry, the consumer analytics. It didn't say when you had met and when you're going to meet again, though.
We had met with them several months ago, and we've requested a proposal for services. The initial figures that we're getting is it's about $70,000. So we've only met with one firm. We definitely would want to look at all the firms that are available that provide that scope of services and see if we could get a more competitive rate. We requested a proposal because we're getting ready to prepare the RDA budget, and funds will be brought before you to see if you would like to pursue that project.
Okay. And from what I understand from this firm, they identify retail outlets that would match our demographics.
Right. They would match our trade market.
Our trade market, okay.
Yes. They'll, for example, you know, sometimes you can be trying to pursue a particular retailer that simply your trade market does not meet their criteria, and unless they change their locational criteria, it really doesn't make sense to put forth the effort trying to attract that particular business. And there may be other unknown businesses, unknown to us retailers, that would be looking for our market area, and our efforts would be better spent, and we might have a higher rate of success in attracting some of those businesses.
Thank you. And how does that differ then from the CalEd program?
The CalEd program is more of a program to provide a professional advisory service. What they're trying to do is help us in developing policy to guide the city's future economic development efforts. They bring in a team of professionals. They take a look at your strengths and weaknesses. They look at your programs. They look at, basically, your local unique conditions, and they make recommendations. One of the first things they will do is they will go over with us economic development concepts and practices and see what we can utilize, what we have on our staff resources to utilize. And what we will end up getting out of that is a report and something that we will hopefully be able to translate into an economic development actual written program or policy that the council would adopt.
Okay. Thank you.
The consumer analytics firms, they really focus on retailers, on attracting retailers.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Unless there's any objection from the rest of the council, let me ask staff then to follow through and have a monthly report prepared for us. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other staff requests or announcements? Ms. Barcelona.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, the staff would advise that a special council meeting has been scheduled for June 8th at 6:30 PM in the council chambers to allow input from the community regarding code enforcement and proposed changes to the city code related to parking on city streets. That is all the staff has tonight. Thank you.
Can we set that up in a way that's less formal so that we can get? We had said that we want the people that are going to be impacted by some of the code changes that we're looking at to be able to talk to us and interact and not five minutes and a light goes on. Is there a way that that can be set up, maybe where we sit down there at that level and allow people to exchange information with us rather than to talk to us? Work on that.
Sure.
That will be next Tuesday, right?
Yes, the 8th.
And that starts at?
6:30 PM.
Thank you. Council, redevelopment agency requests and announcements. Any announcements? Ms. Rouge.
I have a request. I was at the opening of the Dick Dewis Learning Center at the library last week, and if you have a chance to go over to the library, there's a little corner that the Friends of the Library donated $2,000 towards, and it's a very cozy little corner, and it's got a picture of our past mayor up there, and someone had painted the red tennis shoes on the wall. And it's for very young children to come there on one side of the wall at a very low level, our toys for the little ones to play with while bigger brothers and sisters are busy reading their books or getting their books. It's a really nice thing. During the reception afterwards, I had a chance to talk to Dick's wife, Jane, and she made a request that we change the name of the community center from the Richard L. Dewis Center to the Dick Dewis Center because she feels that he was never called Richard Dewis, and she would like to have that name changed. I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but this is a request of the family that we do that. So I don't know what it takes, you know, what act it has to take to do that, but it was a suggestion from the family.
Thank you. Can we get a report back on that, Ms. Barcelona? What it? Probably. I think we're in an ordinance that we're going to have to amend, but we can do that. Any other comments from the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to oral communication. Five minutes, you can talk about any item that you want that's relative to city business. If you're going to talk on an item that's on the agenda, if you want to talk now, you can and not stay here, but if you talk now on the item on the agenda, you won't be able to speak again at the time the item comes up. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak at this time? Seeing no one rise, we'll close the oral communications period, and we'll move to the consent calendar. Tonight, we have six items on the consent calendar in addition to the minutes and the check register. We have zoning ordinance. We have the restriction on streets and parking during the Flower Festival. We have a setting up a special account in the budget, and that item is the one that we will be acting on as both the redevelopment agency and as on the public financing agency. And then finally, we have an item that is to approve a word of a contract to purchase mobile data, computer information, or in-car video systems. What are the wishes of the City Council on the consent calendar?
I make the recommendation that we accept staff's report.
My second.
Motion and second. We have a motion and a second to accept the consent calendar and approve it. Let's cast our votes. I would like to make one comment regarding an item that was on there, and it was purchase of the technical equipment for the police cars. The comment is a bit of a compliment to people going back the last 30 years or more. It's been over 50 years, I guess, well over 50 years, that the decision was made to have a local jail. Last week, I saw that the county, as part of their plans to solve a budget problem, is proposing to close the North County Jail. Having a jail locally means that our officers, when they arrest somebody, can get them immediately off the street and get back onto patrol. They don't have to go, if it was a North County Jail, 30, 45 minutes in the car to book them over in Santa Maria and take them off the streets. If it's closing the North County Jail, it could be an hour or more each way, plus the wear and tear on the vehicles and taking the officers off the streets. So that decision was made a long time ago, that jail was built, and then when the city current police station was built, it was built around the old jail to keep that jail in effect. And I was talking to the chief earlier today. It's quite possible that Guadalupe, Santa Maria may even choose to come over and pay us to book their prisoners in the Lompoc jail rather than take the long time. It's not only the time it takes to drive and take them there, but in turning them in to our own departments, they're able to very simplify the time spent in the station, reduce it. They can complete their reports in their cars with their computers and with the communication system we have. So this is kudos to people going way back when the city did plan to and did build and operates a local jail. So that plus booking fees, and the county wants to charge us whenever we book. That means, to me, what it means is that the police officer arrests somebody that should be off the street, we can take them off the street without applying a financial consideration. Can we afford the booking fee? Can we afford to take three hours off patrol in the streets? No. If the person should be off the street, that decision is made without money. So I want to mention that because this is additional tech equipment in the police cars that we authorized tonight. Moving on, the next item on the agenda. We don't have any appointments usually at this time, but I will note that with regret and appreciation for the service, two youth resignations. We also have one vacancy on the Park and Recreation Commission, and we have vacancy on each of the Mobile Home Rate Stabilization Board and the Pool Oversight Committee. So there are opportunities for people to serve, not on the Pool Oversight Committee anymore.
Mr. Mayor, I thought that we voted for Ralph Harmon the last time, didn't we?
Oh, okay.
Yes, we did.
All right. Wrong on that one. We have the other four vacancies, though, that we're looking at and if people want to serve. We met tonight with the Public Safety Commission before we started our regular meeting. Contact a city clerk regarding applications to be considered for those commissions. Moving on, we'll go into our first public hearing, which is adoption of a revised disadvantaged business enterprise program. Ms. Barcelona, who's going to speak to us on this one?
Mr. Mayor, Civil Engineer Associate III Craig Deering will present the report.
Craig, thank you.
Thank you.
Evening.
Mayor and council members, just briefly explain this process that happens annually. Our disadvantaged business enterprise program is designed to assist small businesses, which are at least 51% owned and controlled by socially and economically disadvantaged individuals. And in order to continue receiving U.S. Department of Transportation funds, federal funding, which is made available to the city through Caltrans, the city must comply with federal and state requirements and have one of these programs in place. And the state requirements require that the city update our annual anticipated DBE participation level percentage and calculation methodology for the following fiscal year, each year around this time. What that means is the annual anticipated DBE participation level is the percentage of all DOT-assisted city work that the city anticipates will be performed by DBEs in the following federal fiscal year. So the amount of work the city anticipates those DBEs will perform of our federal work in the following fiscal year. Caltrans has provided local agencies a methodology to calculate that base value and has reiterated the guidelines in federal code, and the city, as we have in the past nine years, has followed that direction to prepare a figure and adjust it according to that direction. The city reviewed past DBE participation data as well as types of work performed by currently certified DBEs in the city's market area and adjusted our calculated figure this year and has provided the fiscal year 10/11 AADPL values and calculation methodology to the Caltrans District 5 Local Assistance Office for a pre-review and has received word that it appears in line with their rules and the methods and values appear appropriate. I will answer any questions at this time.
Any questions?
Hi. Thank you. In your Table 1, I don't understand all the figures, but this is just a curiosity. The DBE percent of adjusted total bidders is listed by year. There are a couple of years missing, meaning we didn't have any projects or we didn't have any bidders?
Correct. No federally funded projects.
No federally. Okay. So therefore, there were no bidders.
Correct.
Okay. What does this number represent, per se? I mean, the highest was in the year 2000, 2003. Does that mean the economic activity in this town was very high in that year, or was it just we were getting more money from the Fed then as opposed to now? I just kind of want to make some sense out of this.
Sure. That specific column of DBE percentage of adjusted total bidders just reflects how many DBE bidders we got relative to total bidders, essentially.
I see.
So what percentage of the total bidders as adjusted were? So, what percentage of the total bidders as adjusted were DBE bidders?
So, how come we got so many in the year 2003 and we have less than half now? I mean, I'm just curious, is that being driven by the amount of federal funds that we're getting, or is that driven by what? By the economic activity of the town?
It could be the type of work on that project was a type that more DBE firms were interested in bidding on.
Okay, okay, so I guess I need to look in more detail. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Seeing no questions from up here, we'll open it for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on the item before us? Seeing no one rise. It's a good-looking program. Before I retired, I ran the one on the base, and we had additional tools. We had set-asides where only DBE could bid on jobs. And there were, one of the things that I liked about the awards was statistically, when we were going to small business, when we were going to minority-owned business, much greater percent were local contractors. When you open it up and you look at the large business contractors that bid our jobs, they're from Oakland, they're from Bakersfield, they're from Riverside County, and frequently when you have, encourage minority business to bid or small business, they are the people right here in the local community. And I know that one of the things that we use with prompt payment, one of the things that keeps them from being successful is availability of money and the resources. So, I liked your program, but thank you. What are the wishes of the council on the item before us? Mr. Lingle.
I move that we accept staff recommendations.
My second.
Good move, seconded. A motion before us, let's vote. Unanimous approval. Next item on the agenda. Ms. Barcelona, is Mr. McCaffrey going to present this one to us?
Mr. Mayor, Director of Parks and Recreation, Urban Forestry, Mr. Dan McCaffrey will present the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, those in the audience, those viewing from home. Tonight, the item we have before us is a public hearing to consider the ordering of services and improvements and the levy of the assessments for fiscal year 2010-11 for the City of Lambock Park Maintenance and City Pool Assessment District Number 2001, and proposed adoption of Resolution Number 5644/10, approving the engineer's report, confirming the diagram and assessment, and ordering a levy of assessments for fiscal year 2010-11 for the Park Maintenance and City Pool Assessment District Number 2001. In your staff report, it details X amount of information, however, it is recommended that the council hold a public hearing this evening on the proposed continuation of the Park Maintenance and City Pool Assessment District Number 2001. After considering any public comment regarding the proposed continuation of the assessments, improvements, and services funded by the assessments, it is recommended that council approve Resolution 5644/10 to levy the assessments for fiscal year 2010-11 and to direct additional actions related to the levy of those assessments. The proposed assessments do not exceed the previous year's assessment by more than 3% per year as approved by the property owner. The proposed assessments for fiscal year 2010-11 is $23.78 per single-family unit equivalent, and the total amount of revenues to be generated by the assessment for fiscal year 2010-11 is approximately $275,848. This concludes my report. City staff and representatives from SEI Consulting Group, Mikel Wright is with us this evening, and we are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we open for public comment, are there any questions or comments from the council? Ms. Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The engineer's report was not part of the agenda, was it? The agenda package?
It was in the last agenda pack, which was in the report last month.
Okay, so, okay, thank you. It's the same, right?
It is the same.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions or comments at this time? We'll open this for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the item before us?
John Lynn, City of Lambock. I think you might want to ask the attorney if that document needed to be attached, because I noticed it was missing, and I did go back to a prior council meeting and look at my packet. Also, you know, I've noticed that our engineer's report costs us almost 10% of the price of doing this, and I'm wondering maybe if next time around, we might look a little harder and see if, you know, in this economy, might find something a little more affordable. As I read the engineer's report, it appeared there were some numbers that weren't consistent when I looked at it at the last meeting, and I don't think it's anything serious, but it would probably be good to have staff take a quick peruse through it and have the council authorize any technical changes where there were math errors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Any other questions or comments from the public? We'll close public comment period and bring you back to the council. What are the wishes of the council on the item before us? Ms. Barcelona, I think you've noted the comments that were made, if you could look into that. I'll ask you, does the document have to be attached?
You have everything you need legally.
Thank you. Mr. Lingle.
Mr. McCaffrey, just a quick question. How often do you meet with the Parks and Rec Commission? Parks, Pool, and Rec Commission?
The Oversight Committee?
There you go, thank you.
Correct. I'm sorry, your question again now is?
How often do you meet with them?
We meet once a year. Typically, it's at the end, and it's where we review the conclusion of the year, where we actually go and look to make sure that everything that we said we were going to do, money-wise, project-wise, was said and done. And of course, it gives the eyes and the ears of these representative group an opportunity to review it, and that's usually done in October. So, they meet once a year in October. Their findings are then turned around and presented to council typically in November.
They never have an opportunity to have any input in this report, though?
No, not upfront. Typically, once again, their whole role was a post to review what had been done.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, the council? What are the wishes of the council, the item before us? Mr. Rosé.
I move the staff recommendation that we accept the assessment as outlined. I might comment that I was at the, and I believe Councilmember Lingle was there also, at the oversight meeting last October, and they went through the report with a fine-tooth comb, so they, I know with Mr. Harmon on that committee, it'll be even a finer-tooth comb, but they have gone, they do go over the whole report of how the monies were spent.
Do we have a motion?
I second the motion.
We have a second. Any other discussion or comment? Let's vote. Item passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Item 9, relating to standards and guidelines of the development project impact on the water supply and our retrofit programs. Ms. Barcelona, who will we hear from on this?
Mr. Mayor, Utility Conservation Coordinator Mary Cammer will be presenting the staff report.
Thank you. Ms. Cammer.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, excuse me. The recommendations I'm going to bring before you are to help water conservation staff to better and more effectively continue our goal of water conservation, which would be actually to maintain water pumpage at the 1989 and the pre-1989 level. We need to do this with new programs and some changes to old programs. And the first recommendation, then, is to rescind the old Resolution 4988 and replace it with Resolution 4629. Now, the resolution, the 4988, remains, in essence, in effect, with the addition of a section to allow for new water conservation programs. The second recommendation is for an expenditure of $210,000 for new water conservation programs. And the third recommendation is to suspend the collection of retrofit fees until the end of the next fiscal year. In 1990, City Council approved what was called the Toilet Retrofit Program. This program collected fees from building permits or new construction and to replace or to mitigate any extra water that they would be using, so we would keep our pumpage at the level that it was in 1989. Well, since that time, we've retrofitted over 8,000 toilets, well over 8,000 toilets. And when you look at the toilets that can be retrofitted in housing that was built before 1980, approximately 1989 is when the new toilets became, were on the market, we really ran out of toilets to retrofit. So, in order to keep our pumpage with our growth in the city at a level that we've tried to maintain over the years, we need some new conservation programs, and those programs, some of those are being to you tonight. Currently, there's 1.6 million, over $1.6 million in this toilet retrofit fund that we've not spent. Now, conservation staff continues to promote the toilet retrofit program, but there just aren't enough toilets out there to allow the expenditure of this money. So, to prove the new resolution will allow us to bring and institute some new conservation programs that are approved by City Council and taken before the Utility Commission, of course, and with their approval, and then bring to you. So, that's what I'm here tonight to recommend. The first program that we need to look at would be toilet retrofit fees. Now, the old toilet retrofit fees were for 1.6 gallon per flush toilets, retrofitting from 3.5 or more per flush. Since that time, there's been some new technology, improved toilets that flush at 1.28 gallons per flush. So, we're recommending that only those toilets that are given a WaterSense label, kind of similar to the Energy Star label, but WaterSense label was actually promoted from the plumbing industry and from water conservation staff across the country, because there were some issues with the old toilets. And one of the main issues was that if you were to replace the insides of the toilet tank, the flushing mechanism, with something, you would go to Home Depot. Nothing against Home Depot, but this is what's on the market. If you go and place a generic mechanism inside, you may not flush any longer at 1.6. So, this prompted the industry to look at this, toilets, and recommend toilets that would always flush at 1.28 now gallons per flush. They're called high-efficiency toilets, and that's why we're recommending that we only promote it this time. In order to keep our retrofit or our rebate fees in proportion to what it was recommended earlier, we could increase the rebate to $153 per toilet. That would encourage the people to retrofit, maybe who haven't, and also people who have existing 1.6 toilets could get a small stipend for retrofitting with the HET toilets. And we do have requests for people to do that. So, this would allow them to put in a more efficient toilet where now they wouldn't be able to. The other new program I would like to discuss with you is Fix a Leak Month. The EPA has stated that there's about, in family and owner-occupied homes, there's about 25 gallons of water lost per day to leaks. This is in owner-occupied homes, but when you get into rental property, many times, people don't see the bills. Renters are afraid to tell the landlord that there's a problem because they're afraid the rent will go up or they'll have to repay the repair bill themselves. Then, Fix a Leak Month would take and do minor repairs in toilets, faucet leaks, that type of thing, not in the distribution lines that might, you know, entail digging up concrete or something like that. But the minor leaks, to take one month out of this year and offer that, where we'll go in and we'll fix the leak from them. So, estimated that the program would be cost about $200 per household to do that, whenever they go in to do that. And I've been in contact with some plumbers in the city, helping me with cost of doing repairs and things, and so we came up with a recommendation that we allow for the Fix a Leak, and that would be $110,000 into the program. Another issue that we have is not a new program, but it's a program that needs to have a new focus, and that is rebates for new clothes washers and dishwasher. Currently, that's been taken out of the public benefits fees. The real savings is coming from the water savings, since we have very few electrically-heated water heaters in town, mostly gas water heaters. We do track that when we go out and do a rebate, we track to see what kind of heating, what kind of a water heater they do have, and the far majority is gas water heaters. The real issue comes in on our public benefits expenditures. The state does want to see energy efficiency programs when that's how we tag it, and it's not really an electric efficiency program at this point, it's a water efficiency program. We have, we're very cautious about our energy efficiency programs because the state does scrutinize them, we do report them to the state, and it could trigger audits in the future, and this is one of the programs that could trigger an audit. So, recommending that this is taken out of water retrofit fees rather than out of the energy efficiency fees, and that's really where it belongs. And the last program is kind of, it's a tag along with the county, they applied for grant money, and they received it. And that program is to offer rebates for people who tear out lawns and put in water-efficient plants. And so, I recommend, I'm asking for $5,000 for that. Our match with the county would be $10,000, but $5,000 in staff time and water audits and whatnot would be the other part. So, I don't anticipate we're going to get a lot of activity on this, but if we do, it would be another opportunity for some very efficient programs. So, that's the last program that we're asking funding for. Seems it's kind of exciting. I've had people who in the past who have called about doing something like this. Some communities call it cash for grass. I don't know if we want to call it that or not, there's, could be other meetings for that. So, we're just calling it Low Water Using Retrofit, Landscape Retrofit Program. And the last item is suspend the collection of fees. Since we have such an oversupply of money here, it's in the public's best interest and encourage economic growth to suspend them, at least for the next fiscal year. So, these programs are to further promote water conservation. Staff is always strive to encourage that, and we continue to strive to encourage that. And with your acceptance of these programs, I think we can go a long way to that. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions this time? Ms. Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to kind of, if you can take me through the process of what does a resident have to do to apply for this, and how long does it take, and how easy is it? You know, for any one of these programs, whether it's the toilet retrofit, or how, you know, if I have a leak in my house, where do I go? How long does it take me to go through this process and so forth?
The first contact, obviously, is with the city, and usually, we will send out the program information to them. They'll call for an appointment, there's always an appointment involved to verify that the toilet retrofit's been done, the clothes washer is in place, it's Energy Star, the dishwasher has been removed, and that's Energy Star. Whatever the program is, it depends on the customer, how long they take to make their appointment. The appointment's usually made at their customer's convenience, it's usually made within that week. Sometimes, they want a longer period of time. Once we're out there, and then the check is usually processed, if it's a check issue or if it's on the bill, it's usually processed within a check issue, within a week, a week and a half, and the rebate within a month, depending where on building cycle how that starts on your bill.
Okay, so you have people from what department going and do the visitation?
From the utility department.
From the utility department? From the utility department, okay. So they will go to their house and look, you know, at the dishwasher or whatever, right?
Or the toilet, verified it's in place, yes.
Okay, and as far as the building permit fee, this is to waive the fee if, for the replacement or just a new remodel? Where is the building?
When new development, when somebody wants to construct new housing.
Oh, this is new housing, so this is not related to if I want to replace my toilet with a water-efficient toilet? I don't have to apply for a permit, or do I?
No, not for actually the replacement of the toilet, but when new construction is proposed to the city, water staff looks at the amount of water that type of construction would use. If it's a single-family house, there's estimates of how much they would use if it's a certain type of business. And then they pay, they pay a fee to offset that amount of water. They have an option of replacing, currently the option is of replacing toilets themselves, finding customers where they can replace toilets themselves, a prescribed number of toilets, or paying into the fund where the city finds the customer to replace the toilets, and that's the current process. In the past, we've not been able to use the money for other programs. We're asking to use some of it for new programs.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Durham?
And just confirming that these funds, this 1.2, can only be used for this type of a program?
Water conservation programs, yes.
Thank you.
This time, I'll, seeing no more questions up here, I'll open the public comment period. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the issue before us? Don't go away, Mary, it doesn't look like anybody's driving. We'll close the public comment period and bring it back. I have a question or a comment. What you've listed are suggested programs. You've said that it's a purpose to find water-saving measures. If there are other programs that somebody implements that will save water, can they describe it and submit it, and can we be sure that the commission then has the authority to look at it and make some decisions based on the value? Is that, is that in here?
That is not in here currently.
I could think of other, of other things that might be done, as a matter of fact, I'm doing one of them in my house right now, that we're doing solely to save water. And if my water heater is the very front of the property, my master bedroom is the very back of the property, I've measured the water, cold water, that I have to run in order to get hot water when I get in the shower, and four times a day, I'm running three and a half gallons of cold water down the drain, if either the sink or the shower, to wait for the hot water to get there. So I took the back bedroom off of the hot water system and put it on a local point-of-use electric water heater that just heats water in that back shower, period. And with a program like that, easy to demonstrate how much it's saving, somebody defined it, I'd like to see that something like that, that's still purpose, being done just for the purpose of saving water, can be defined and that the Utilities Commission can review and make a determination of if we're, if we're paying $200, $150 for a toilet that's going to save so much water a day, can they, can they apply, as long as it doesn't exceed a certain percentage of the, of the cost for other, other programs? And I don't want to see every nickel and dime program coming back to the council, I'd like to give that to the Utilities Commission. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but there are, there are programs, other things that can be done to save water in residences. So I'd like to see the authority of the Utilities Commission to look at on a one-at-a-time basis within some guidelines and make a determination of a rebate, set a minimum or a maximum or however you want to do it, but I'd propose that be added. I'll make that as a motion to see if there's enough interest from the rest of the council to pursue that. No second? Ties?
Well, I've got another interesting idea also, because not too long ago, my plumber suggested putting, what do they call it, the immediate water?
Circulation.
Circulate, whatever it is, but our bathroom in the very back of the home, with that unit in there in place, it's immediate. As soon as you turn the hot water on, it's hot water, and it's...
You're using electricity or you're using gas to heat the water in the pipes. When you turn it off, the hot water stays in the pipe, and it's got to be circulated and heated, so you're using more energy. That was, that was why I went the way I did.
Yeah, I'm not a plumber, so I don't know about that, but I do know that that's another, I mean, if you wanted to talk about what you did, Mayor, it would be the same thing. You're saving, obviously, three to four gallons of water if you had it, so would that be accessible too? I think, I think the report is very well-written, and in fact, I like every item on there. I think it's going to be beneficial to the community.
When we look at new programs, because we're also an electric department, which probably gets us in trouble and adds another factor in when we look at things, is the amount of energy that it uses to, say, pump your water through your house, the amount of energy that is, sometimes the amount of energy or the electricity is more valuable than the cost of water, and you have to look at those programs, you have to weigh them against each other also. But I agree, there are a lot of water conservation programs that we need to address and look at. Mainly, we're a community of residences and small business, and so when we look at other programs, that's all we can really look at. We don't have any industry where there's big water savings or anything, so we continually to look at new programs, and we'll continue to look at new programs and listen to ideas for new programs and recommendations on new programs.
Tony, several people suggested to me that same, the same program, constant circulation of the hot water, but if I was to go away for a week and not use it, they're still heating that water as it's being circulated in order to make sure there's hot water in the, in the, in the pipes whole system, right?
No.
So...
Turn it off.
Mr. Mayor, I have my light on.
Or you can switch it off, but, okay, but...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I have the light on for a while. I would like to present a motion.
All right.
I would like to move that, given the staff report with the programs that have been brought up, I think they're perfectly adequate, and I think they're actually very simple. If there is any other programs that we need to do, you know, that's something that maybe a council member can discuss with the staff at a later time, but I really move that what is presented here, that we accept the staff report.
I agree with Councilman Martner, because I'm sure that any logical condition that comes up, whether it be the mayor's, you know, deal or otherwise, it can be added to or modified, so I second the motion.
Mr. Rouget?
Well, I was going to second it, but that's okay. I really think those are good ideas, Ms. Camer, and also the idea of temporarily suspending the retrofit fees, which will help in these hard economic times. I think that's an excellent idea, so I do wholeheartedly support your ideas. If there are other ideas, maybe the Utility Commission would like to look at other ideas and, you know, help with other suggestions, but, you know, we can hassle that all night, but I think these, your report was great, and the ideas are really good.
Thank you. No comments, Mr. Lingle? We have a motion before us, let's vote. And that passes unanimously. I don't remember ten. City Administrator?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Management Services Finance Director, Agency and Authority Treasurer, Mr. Brad Wilke will present staff report on actions and authorizations necessary to issue tax allocation bonds, Series 2010.
Thank you. Councilmembers, agency members, and authority directors. Brad Wilke, Management Service Director, as well as the City Treasurer and the Treasurer of the Agency and Authority. I mention that just because this action is for all three of those entities. At the April 20th meeting, council gave direction to continue forward with projects that are anticipated to be funded by RDA Resources. At the May 18th meeting, the last meeting, City Council Redevelopment Agency meeting, authority was provided to expand RDA tax increment funds on community recreation facilities. This agenda item, if approved by the three boards, provides the framework necessary to issue the tax allocation bonds to provide sufficient proceeds for the projects, including these projects that were authorized at the last meeting. The framework includes coverage ratios for the work that is in excess of the minimum requirements. This provides for adequate funds to provide for the agency's ongoing operations, as well as providing the cushion for the investors. At the Redevelopment Agency workshop held in November, on November 3rd last year, the city's financial advisor presented background information on the bonds as it was structured at that point in time. Since that time, and especially since the April 20th meeting, staff has been working with our financial advisors and others to fine-tune the proposed bond structure. There haven't been very many changes since the November period, and that's the main, main thing I want to say, is that what was presented back in November for the bond is pretty much the same as was presented then. The bond package is proposed to be sized to allow for approximately $7 million of bond proceeds available for projects. The actual amount will depend on the bids that come in and the market conditions when the bids are out. The bids are proposed based on this recommendation to go out in about two weeks with final funding of the bonds by the end of the month. There's been a lot of activity on this whole project since November, but at this point in time, I'll conclude my staff report, and I would also like to mention that Dan Cox of KNN Public Finance, the city's public financial advisors, as well as Scott Ferguson from Jones Hall, our bond and disclosure counsel are here in case there's any questions. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilke. Any questions at this time? Ms. Martner?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the question that I have is, we're limiting the bond size to a maximum of $8.5 million. Why is that?
It was based on an analysis of both the ability to borrow the money based on the debt coverages, that debt coverage, the minimum that can be based on the prior bonds coverage is 1.4. We chose a 1.5, which allowed a little bit more flexibility, but that in turn made the maximum amount that can be borrowed at the 8.5, so...
So I guess I'm a little confused, because if I remember correctly, I thought that we were doing 7 million, but now we're doing...
The seven is the net number, the 8.5 is gross, which is, includes the fees, the money that has to be set aside for, in this environment, yeah.
Okay, so that's where the disconnect is.
That's the difference, too.
Okay, so the net is really $7 million to this day.
Around there.
Thereabouts. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Either side of that.
Any other questions at this time? Seeing done, we'll open the, for public comment. Any comments? I'm going to look up, the public is smaller. It's only 10 after 8. We'll close public comment, bring it back to council. Any other questions, comments? What are the wishes of the council on the item before us? Mr. Durham?
Well, I think I said this before, this is a no-brainer. If we're going to do it, and we are going to do it, now's the time, so I suggest that we go with the proposal given by Mr. Wilke at this time.
Thank you. I'll second that motion. There are actually three actions, one by each hat that we wear. We have a motion on the floor, Ms. Rouget?
That was my question, do we have to vote on these separately? Is the different, we just take the whole? Okay.
All right, okay. Let's cast our votes. Unanimous.